Why does it keep doing that to me?
Good.
You're live.
Hello?
Yeah, you're there.
Okay, Steve.
No. You made it again.
Who goes here?
Joe Mello.
Hey, Joe, how are you?
Having fun.
I think you always do.
I try.
That's a good thing. That is a good thing.
I'm mute.
This fire is inside my body. Hey, um. Gene and Mark and Tony, I don't know if you saw my text. But hoping it's possible, he may be on the meeting. I'm feeling a bit under the weather here, so I might just be more of a quiet observer.
Yeah, you want to do it, Gene?
No, go ahead.
Sure.
If you don't, if you don't mind.
All right, fine. Wait a minute, another minute before we hit 6:30.
What, did you get a cold?
Not sure. Sort of in and out of bed all day. I'm sure I'll feel better tomorrow, but.
No.
Okay. 6:30, you're going to open the joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen, what a health and the Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority. I see our office members on. So first we have a coronavirus update. Deb, Tony?
So, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, so Debbie and John unfortunately aren't going to be able to make it tonight, but I was able to get some information from both of them ahead of time. Our total COVID case number for November is 20. We had eight new cases yesterday. We, we actually are following the trend across the state of a little bit of an uptick in numbers. We expect to see more numbers rise, especially after the Thanksgiving holiday. In November, this time last year, our total case was 30. So even with our high vaccination numbers, still a pretty high number for this month. Our testing data that was last reported, so from November 7th to November 20th, there was 437 tests conducted and nine of them were positive. So good news is that, you know, our, our residents are being proactive and getting tested. Unfortunately, we had nine positive out of that, out of that data set. We conducted a clinic at the town hall yesterday with Cataldo and Johnson School, primarily targeting school age children in the heart. Five to 11. Seventeen children were vet, got their first, first dose of Pfizer and their second dose or the next clinic that'll be here is going to be December 21st from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Did that, Tony, did that meet the expectations of the number of kids that would have gotten vaccinated?
You know, we were actually, we were actually kind of lower on our target, but higher, so with the Cataldo brought with them booster shots, expecting that parents, you know, who might be eligible, who are bringing their kids for their first shot, you know, may want to use the opportunity to get the booster. But it was, we were unsure of like how many people would take advantage of that. And then the clinic got published like in the Herald and on Channel 5 as a pop-up clinic for booster shots. So we ended up getting a lot more people. We had a total of 121 doses given yesterday. So as I said, 17 were for the pediatric dose. But we had 34 adult Pfizer doses, 12 Moderna full doses, 57 Moderna boosters and one Johnson and Johnson. So we actually ended up having a lot more adults than expected, which is a good thing. You know, we had, it was a successful clinic, but originally, you know, our target was But originally, you know, our target was, was the youth, but we still got seventeen, so that's good. As far as our vaccine stats go, as of the twenty-fifth, for the first dose from five to eleven, we have sixty-one residents between the age of five and eleven have received their first dose. And that's sixty-one out of a hundred and sixty-six. First dose from age twelve to fifteen is ninety-one out of ninety-eight. So, you know, clearly that twelve to fifteen range, we're doing better. Five to eleven, not as well. But, you know, I, you know, it's hard to tell why that is. I'm, I'm sure it's just kind of a, you know, a kind of a scary thing to decide as a parent, you know, five-year-old child, if you're gonna give them the vaccine or not, so. We were just asking people that they reach out to their primary care physician if they have any questions about that. And you know, we're, we're, we're here to provide the vaccine should they want to get it.
So there was no notification for the booster shots for the adults?
No, actually, we were, originally, we didn't know how many Cataldo was gonna bring with them. And it was more of like, if an adult that brings their child wants to get a booster, we'll have it here for them. We didn't really, we didn't advertise it, but then Channel Five and the, and the Herald advertised it by accident as a full pop-up clinic. And so we got a lot more people, but that's okay. You know, we're gonna, the November, I mean, the December twenty-first will will let people know that, you know, we will have boosters available or first doses available for adults. And it'll be kind of like on a availability basis.
And that'll be in town?
That'll be at the town hall.
Town hall, great.
Okay, anything else, Tony?
Let's see. Double check what John. You know, John's meeting with other communities, DPA, you know, officials from other communities. There's, the state is trying to help out with tracking because of the recent uptick. And he's, you know, making sure that we, we are, you know, maintaining those relationships with our neighbors, so. Other than that, we're in good, we're in good shape.
Okay, great. Thanks, Tony. Good job. Okay, I have some opening comments here. Upcoming events, Christmas tree sales at Lowland's parking lot, Thursday and Friday from six to nine PM. Six PM to nine PM, Saturdays and Sundays from nine AM to nine PM. The annual tree lighting Saturday, December fourth at six o'clock on the front lawn of the town hall. Hope people can join us up there. The Christmas parade fundraiser is on Saturday, December eleventh, beginning at six PM at the Tied Restaurant. Twenty-fifth Annual Christmas Parade Fundraiser, Saturday, December eighteenth, beginning at six PM. The parade will go, will begin at Cliff Street and will go townwide. The winter parking ban begins December twenty-first through March twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. All vehicles must be parked off the street during the hours of twelve AM to six PM. Are we still doing special requests, Tony, from the police department on, on street parking?
Yes. You can get a winter, you can get a winter permit by request. Yep.
Yeah. Oh, excuse me, six AM.
Is that, is that snow or no snow or, or, or all the, all the time?
All the time.
So if people have limited parking and they're scrambling to find a spot, if we can accommodate you, contact the police department, they'll meet with you and take a look at the area and try to authorize some on-street parking during the winter. But even with that, if it snows, you're gonna have to get your car off the street. Okay. Gene and Josh, anything in opening comments?
I just wanted to mention in case people were wondering about the project, the Flash Road Playground, the new basketball court and tennis courts and pickleball courts. Unfortunately, the, to paint the courts, the weather needs to be over fifty degrees F and we ran out of time, so unfortunately, those won't get painted until the spring.
Are we got much activity in the winter down there anyway? Okay, Gene?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, we have the public hearing as the local licensing authority. This is a public hearing to accept a renewal and transfer of a liquor license and common vicular license for the Bayside. So Gene, if I could have a motion to open this hearing?
I move that the Board of Selectmen open the public hearing as the Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, to vote to accept the renewal and transfer of the liquor license and common vicular license for the Bayside Restaurant.
Seconded.
Motion's are made, seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
So Jerry, are you the preparator?
This is Attorney John Maradian, Democas Law Offices. I filed the transfer application and, and Jerry Raffielli is on the camera, I can see him. You've got to mute yourself, Jerry. What we're seeking tonight is after the, the town. Hey, Mr. Maradian, before you go further, the motion on the floor is to open the hearing and then, so if you guys can vote yeah, to open it and then give it right back to Mr. Maradian.
We'll get back. So the motion on, on the floor is to open the hearing, if they're made and seconded. All those in favor?
Gene, Canty, I.
Josh, Andrew, Mike.
Colin and I. Gene, if you could make the, there'll be two motions here, one for the the transfer, I believe, Tony, also one for the renewal, right?
Right. So first, first, the motion will be to renew and then after renewal, we'll vote on transfer.
Okay, sounds good. Gene, if I have a motion to, on the first motion, please?
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following liquor license renewal application for two thousand twenty-two approved by the ABBCC. Goodell's Inc., DBA, Bayside Restaurant, One Southwick Avenue, Nahat, Mass. Restaurant licensed, all alcoholic beverages. And further, the release of said license is subject to the approval of all inspections and payment of all outstanding fees, fines and payments to the town of Nahat.
Seconded.
Motion's are made and seconded. Open the discussion. Tony, this, this is just the renewal of the license, so the attorney, Gary, don't need. This is not affecting them, it's the transfer that affects them.
That's correct.
Do we have, this is a public hearing. Should I open this up to anyone in support of this renewal? And anyone who is against the renewal? Well, we start with anybody who may support this renewal.
I'm in favor of the support of the renewal.
I would hope so. Okay, anybody else? Anyone against the renewal of this liquor license? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Gene, Canty, I.
Josh, Andrew, Mike.
Colin and I. All right, Gene, if I could have the motion to transfer?
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following transfer of the liquor license application for the year two thousand twenty-two to be approved by the ABBCC from Goodell's Inc., DBA, Bayside Restaurant, Dana Goodell Manager, One Southwick Avenue, Nahat, Mass. Zero one nine zero eight. Restaurant licensed, all alcoholic beverages. Two, Bayside Function Corporation, DBA, the Bayside, Gerardo Raphael Manager, One Southwick Avenue. Restaurant licensed and all alcoholic beverages. And further, that the release of said licenses is subject to the approval of all inspections and payment of all outstanding fees, fines and payments to the town of Nahat and authorize the town administrator to sign the licensing authority certification form.
Seconded. Seconded. Discussion, Attorney Maradian, did I get that correct?
Yeah, John Maradian, Democas Law Offices. As I was saying, Jerry Raffielli is partners here for the Bayside Function Corporation and is seeking a transfer of the alcohol license to their, to the corporation. It's gonna be the same business, just operating the function center, same operation, it's just a new ownership group. These guys are well-known in town, they do good work. We're seeking two things, a transfer and the approval of Jerry Raffielli's manager record. You know, Jerry has experience running restaurants in the past. So with that, any questions you may have for the, the new owners here, you know, we're welcome to answer them. But those are the two requests we have in front of you today.
Thank you. Gene, any questions? Josh?
Just really quick, Gary and Attorney Maradian, is the intent to operate, operate this strictly as a function hall? Or is it?
As of right now, yes, as a function hall.
Yeah, okay.
As what it's purposed to do now.
Yep, okay. That's all I had.
No, I, no, I haven't, I heard the word owner is, is this Jerry, is this you or, or a group?
Me, my cousin.
Jerry.
Jerry and Jerry.
Jerry and Jerry.
Just asking. That's fine.
Well, you know, I think it's, it's really great to see the, the Bayside come out of the mothballs. I'll take the mothballs out of the Bayside and look forward to to coming down to one of the functions, so. Let me ask if there's anybody listening who wants to speak in favor of this motion? Hearing none, anyone who wants to speak against this motion? Hearing none, we give a roll call vote.
Gene, Canty, I.
Josh, Andrew, Mike?
Colin and I. Thank you, thank you, John, and thank you. Appreciate it.
So Mr. Chairman, we, we
Okay.
I think what we did, we jumped around a little, we renewed the liquor license and we transferred the liquor license. We should now renew the common victular license and then transfer that. So the motion to renew that is.
I have it. I, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the following common victular license transfer as it stands alone or in connection with the liquor license for the year two thousand twenty-two for the following establishment. From Goodell's, DBA, Bayside Restaurant, Dana Goodell Manager, One Southwick Avenue, Nahat. Restaurant licensed and all alcoholic beverages. Two, the Bayside Function Corp., DBA, the Bayside Gerardo Raphael Manager, One Southwick Avenue, Nahat, Mass. Restaurant licensed and all alcoholic beverages. And further, that the release of said licenses is subject to the approval of all inspections and payment of all outstanding fees, fines and payments to the town of Nahat.
Okay, did. Motion's are made and seconded. Tony, do we have to seek if there's anyone listening approve or disapprove of this?
I would think so, where it's still part of the hearing. Well, actually, I'll defer to Dan on that.
Yeah, we should do it just as a cover basis.
Motion, was that motion? I'm just trying to follow along, if that was to renew and transfer, or was that just a transfer?
Says just a transfer, to approve the following transfer.
Right.
We did the renewal before, I think, Tony.
Okay. All right, so now, okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Yep.
So I, I hear no one speaking for or against this. Take a roll call vote.
Gene, Canty, I.
Josh, Andrew, Mike?
Colin and I. Okay, I think that wraps it up. Again, Jerry, look forward to seeing you down there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that the Board of Selectmen close the public hearing.
Seconded.
Motion's are made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing hearing none, all in favor?
Gene, Canty, I.
Josh, Andrew, Mike?
Colin and I. Okay, we're onto new business. We submit a through.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Yeah, thanks, Jerry.
Thank you.
Buck.
Yes, meeting minutes.
You, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to make a decision here. I did not receive the minutes. So I don't know if I should be making the motion or approving them.
I received them. Josh, you get them?
Yes, I have the minutes. Yep.
I'm making a motion.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from October sixth and October twentieth, twenty twenty-one.
Seconded. Okay, I guess.
Well, Mike seconded it, so.
Any discussion on the motion? Being the hearing none, all in favor?
Josh, Andrew, Mike?
Colin and I. Okay. Ongoing business, Northern Strand Bike Lane?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Canty is standing from that vote, which makes sense.
Yeah, I should, sorry, Dan. I abstain.
Okay. Ongoing business, Northern Strand Extension Bike Lane Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, we had, well, a couple of weeks ago, we joined, you know, the last time we had a Board of Selectmen meeting, we went through our meeting pretty quickly so we could all jump on to the Northern Strand Public Meeting. And I thought all three of you provided some very strong comments that were received positively by the consultants. For anyone that wasn't on the call, we supported the project and, but expressed concern about the impact to traffic heading towards the Rotary on the northbound side of the last part of the Linway from Market Street to the Rotary. And essentially, we, you know, put an ask in for them to explore moving the bike lane to the southbound side where there isn't as much congestion. And it sounded like they were understanding of that request that they felt it was reasonable and that they were gonna go back and take a look. A lot of what they responded with was that originally they hadn't, you know, looked into it that far because of an older study that occurred, you know. I forget how long ago the old study was done, but much earlier than the recent housing developments that have occurred or on the horizon. So, I thought we made, as a town, I thought we made some really good points there and I thought they were received well. Since then, Since then, I've spoke with the town administrator in Swamp Scott and the town administrator in Marblehead. They, as expected, didn't know much about the project. And I'm forwarding them as much information as possible and I'll be drafting a letter with the help of attorney script that will formalize our, you know, comments that we made in that meeting. And hopefully, we'll get Swamp Scott and Marblehead to sign on as well.
That's great, Tony. You know, I think it's a great idea that South Side that you come up with. And, you know, I think it will impact this project as it's currently laid out, it probably has a bigger impact on Swamp Scott and Marblehead than it does on Nahat. So hopefully, they'll, they'll get themselves up to speed and be supportive of our recommendation.
Yeah, I was encouraged by their willingness to, you know, bend and consider other options. I was, I was concerned going into it that, you know, the die would be cast, but um, they definitely seemed to be open to ideas that we put forth. So that was encouraging. We just got to make sure we stay on top of it.
Yeah. You know, I talked to Tony yesterday a little bit about this and I like this idea to begin with on the southbound route. Because if you take a look, and I've driven the thing, we all drive it every day, but I've driven it three or four times over the last couple of days. And when you get down to the rotary and you take the bike lane and you try to pull over the Nahat lane into the causeway lane and the traffic, the mixed traffic, the Swamp Scott Marblehead is in the left-hand lane, is going to try to push into that Nahat lane. This thing going north is going to be a real challenge. In fact, more than a challenge, it's going to be a catastrophe. I think. That's my personal opinion. I think we have to push hard when getting them to change this. Now, another thought I had, if you want to hear it, is at the very end, as you go into the rotary, there's a lot of green space there. The sidewalk and then all the green spaces between that and the towers. We could take and move Nahat, the lane for Nahat over into that area if we could procure the property. Move over into that area and work our way easily into Nahat. Just my thoughts on it.
Yeah, I think now the design, the layout of the design is using that grassed area for the bikeway. So what we were originally asking is if they make that cutoff to the bikeway further up the linway before you get to the curve at, at the rotary. So, but the bike lane is going to cut into that grass area somewhere after that Lynn Housing Authority building.
That would be good.
Going to go by that, you know, basically right in front of the tennis courts.
Okay. Yeah, that would, that would open up the space we need.
That's, of course, an alternative to the idea that Tony put for us about putting all the bike traffic on the southbound lane side, right?
That's right. Yeah, I think the southbound lane, it makes much more sense.
Yeah, that'll be a challenge, but it's not used as much or it won't at the prime time, so it certainly would be a better alternative.
Yeah, the only problem that I think you mentioned it, Tony, is that they'll have to try to figure it out because where the Christie's is, is D C R does not own that property. So it could be a little bit difficult trying to fit it in there, but um.
Yeah, but I, you know, I think that they could do a nice crossing at the existing pedestrian crossing right before you hit the rotary. That, you know, it's a stoplight, it's a, it's a activated stoplight now.
So that's a, I was just going to say, I think that's a lot more desirable than the plan to cross the causeway down by the the D C R Public Works Building where people are going thirty-five, forty miles an hour. And there was adding a light and things like that. Crossing, as you described, Tony, where there's already a crosswalk and you're coming from Swamp Scott with the lights already in place, to me, that's just much better.
No, so I'm, I'm speaking differently. So the, I'm talking about the, when you're approaching the rotary, if you're driving and you're approaching the rotary, before you actually get on the rotary, there's a crosswalk there.
Oh, right, yeah.
They, you know, they won't put a bike lane in the rotary and they don't own the Christie's law. So they can't make it to the Lynch or Drive crossing that you're talking about. So you would still cross, you would still, you'd cross the linway right before the rotary and then you would cross over at the D C R building. So it doesn't, it doesn't prevent, it doesn't, you know, what you were just saying, it's, you still have to look into that issue.
Yeah, I don't like, I don't like that scenario. I hope we can avoid it. We can make some sketches and do some PowerPoint or some CAD sketches or something as a sort of formalize our recommendations.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea, Josh.
Yeah, and so I did some research on that older study that they were referring to, which was, I think it was like ten, twelve years ago. And it went up, it didn't come up Market Street to the linway. It went, you know, towards Lewis and then it took a right on the hot street and crossed over Lynch or Drive there. So it avoided the linway altogether and stayed in the more residential areas. You know, so I don't know why they got away from that. But it might be worth mentioning in our letter.
When are you hoping to get the letter out?
Next week, the latest. I mean, I want to give Swamp Scott Marblehead some time to review it and see if they want to sign on.
Yeah.
I can give them like a deadline as, you know, by the end of next week or something.
The way this is drafted, it's going, it's going to add a half hour to their drive time. So I would certainly think they'd want to be a part of this discussion.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I, they understood where we were coming from. I mean, I think that their initial response was you know, a little cautious about being against the project completely. And I explained to them, that's not what we were doing. You know, we're supportive of the project. We're just trying to tweak it a little bit. So they, they, like I said, they didn't really know much about it.
Amazing. They're going to be impacted the most.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see. That's all we have on that. We'll move on to housing availability discussion. Tony and Josh, I know you've been meeting about this and talking about it. So why don't you bring us up to date?
Well, I'll give you a little, a little bit of background. Tony and I met with Amy Questle of K P Law. I'll say, at least for me, it was more about getting an education on affordable housing and forty B and so on. And I learned a lot and we've compiled some notes. We had a couple of meetings with Amy, actually, and circulated, Tony circulated those. Hopefully, you have seen those and had a chance to read through them, but um, you know, background is that all communities in Massachusetts, Tony, correct me if I say something wrong here, are ten percent of the housing stock is supposed to be dedicated as affordable housing. So in the case of Nahat, we have just over sixteen hundred housing units. So that means a hundred and sixty-one-ish affordable housing units. We're currently at forty-eight. So, which is three percent. So we have a ways to go on meeting that, on meeting that goal. Now, one, one thing that can be done is approve a housing production plan that has sort of milestone goals and of, you know, increasing the affordable housing stock over a period of time. And we had a lot of discussion about how we could approach that that goal. And Mark, your, your thoughts on accessory dwellings could potentially dovetail well into that if we can. It would require deed restrictions and so on, but you know, there's a lot of, a long way to go on this. I don't want to get into too much detail, but I think it's important for Nahat to think to the future and not wait until we have a crisis. But rather to get this housing production plan in place and start working on those goals. There is one other, let's call it safe harbor option, which is if one and a half percent of the available land space is dedicated to affordable housing, that also gives you safe, safe harbor from unfriendly forty B developments. Just for people's edification, the forty B, forty B developments don't need to meet Nahat's zoning laws. So that's potentially problematic for, I think, for the town to have buildings that don't meet our zoning laws. So that's in part a driver behind this. So that's another approach for Nahat to meet the requirements. So we'll probably look at that first.
Josh, can you, can you dig just a little deeper into that? Does that mean that if any property that's available to a builder or contractor that they can build it to any dimensional size that they want? Can they go up four stories? Can they expand to three hundred feet?
I'm not certain, but I think that's the, that's the concern, yeah.
Let me just jump in a little. I think there are some sort of restrictions. Some, it's, this is similar to the the Dover Amendment provision where if you don't meet these requirements, they come in. There's, I mean, I mean, you couldn't plop a fifty-story building in the middle of Island Road, for example. I don't think that would be permitted. Dan, you might want to jump in here, but I think it has, but they, they are given a lot of leeway on what they can do with unfriendly forty B.
I agree, Mark. I think there are some limitations, although they're pretty lax one compared to the normal restrictions provided by our zoning bylaws.
Well, I, you know, the, the housing plan is something that I would absolutely support. Tony, I think I, I sent you some information on Metropolitan Plan and Council. I think would be a great source to help the town command and put our plan together. They've done it for a lot of other communities. And I'm not just restricting it to them. There are plenty of other consultants that, that could help us along the way here. But they're sort of a quasi-public entity that has a lot of familiar familiarity with the, with the area. So looking at assessing accessory dwelling units, looking at existing affordable housing plans. There's other property in town that is, that may come up for development over the next several years that we need to be concerned about. And I think all of that should be put into a comprehensive plan.
Hey, Mark. Just a quick question, if you could answer it. How do the accessory dwellings dovetail into something like this?
Well, I mean, I think, Dan, you can jump in if you want. With the accessory dwelling units, the new law would allow the town to put certain restrictions on it. We could say you can have an accessory dwelling unit in your house. Your house has to be, for example, one of the restrictions could be autooccupied. Another, we could limit age. We could say sixty-five or older. We could have a provision in there for affordable housing standards, those types of things. Is that right, Dan?
Yeah, that's, there are limitations that can be added to ADUs. This is still in the formation phase, but Newton had a pretty good example. As you mentioned, owner occupied, things of that nature.
Is an accessory, is an accessory dwelling a separate unit?
We can, that's up to us to determine, like, the details of what would characterize as an accessory dwelling unit. But, you know, one thing that's interesting about it is, as, as you know, the town is zoned as single-family structures. So we can provide an incentive to our zoning that would basically say you can become a legal two-family if the second unit, the accessory dwelling unit meets, you know, our forty B requirement. If it's affordable, if it's for senior living, if you put, you know, that sort of thing. So that, that's how you could dovetail it into the forty B issue. You know, it's, it's, the concept of it is, is there and I think it sounds, and it's going to be interesting to see it. I think the details are a whole nother conversation because once you start getting into that, there's building code issues that, you know, have to be addressed as well. And so it, but it could work, it could, it could help us out as far as meeting the number of units that are required by every town. And whether it be rented or whether it be condoed has a different impact on the number of units that counts towards that could count towards our total. So if you had a two-family house and you are renting, you're renting that secondary unit, both units might count towards, even though the top one isn't affordable, or the, I'm sorry, the second unit isn't affordable. If you're renting it, both units may count towards that total number. If it's condo, then only the one counts towards it. So there's different type of elements in the law that, that, you know, would affect or how you mentioned, you know, dovetail into that forty B conversation. The other, the other thing that you know, the alternative requirement is called the general land area minimum. It's called, or GLAM, which says that as, as I think Selectman Antrim mentioned it a little bit, is one point five percent of the land area of the municipality is dedicated to affordable housing. I think we might be closer to meeting that than we might be as far as the percentage of the housing stock. And a housing production plan, like Mark had mentioned, could, you know, start with that assessment, find out where we are and then really put together the, the plan. And, you know, I don't know if I've mentioned it to you, to the three of you, but you know, I think a, a good idea might be to apply for CPC funding under the housing umbrella to pay for, you know, a consultant to produce a housing production and assessment plan for us.
Yeah, great idea.
So we could, we could do that this year. We could put an application in for that.
Let's do that. You know, I think it includes, it's, there's a lot of, as you said, a lot of components to it. It's a forty B. It's senior housing. Also, you know, it's our zoning issues and our zoning laws. And I think, you know, a review of that can also help.
Yeah, I mean, twenty-four percent, based on our twenty sixteen open space study, twenty-four percent of the town is open space. So seventy-six percent is not. One point five percent of that needs to be affordable. So I'm curious how close we are to that.
Well, I've done, I've done these calculations before, Tony. Yeah. I can pull the file up there sometime, but, so it doesn't include streets and sidewalks, for example. You have to take that out of the equation. It doesn't include any commercial or industrial properties. Yeah, so let's make sure what we're measuring here. But we're pretty close. I mean, if you, I, we had gotten to the point on the Coast Guard housing. If that entire area was credited towards affordable housing, we would have exceeded the one and a half percent. The one and a half percent.
On the glam side.
But the problem was with that, we were, the original proposal back. Year two thousand, whatever it was. We only had twenty five percent affordable. So only twenty five percent of the entire acreage there were qualified. Not the full full acreage.
But we, you know. Well, you know, I wonder how, I wonder, you know, with. With eminent domain and the conservation restriction, I mean, even though that's, that really wasn't for housing anyways. You know, I don't know if the golf, was the golf course. Included in your calculation too?
No, I. It's been a while, but I I'm thinking.
I bet you were closer, I bet, my point is, I bet you were closer to meeting the glam threshold than we are the housing stock threshold.
Oh, a lot closer, we're very close.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Well, I'll ask the question, just to ask the question, was it considered during the Coast Guard? Public hearings or during their discussions, this gland program?
Well, the reason, the reason the Coast Guard Housing decided to go with twelve individual lots. Sold, you know, in a fashion that they can't be combined. Was to avoid the potential for an unfriendly forty B development. So they did, so I I I had to imagine they looked at it generally. And, you know, their 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 goal was to, you know, make enough money that would. Pay off the the bonds.
I I just, you know, you know, my position on that, Tony, I feel differently that. I think our our goal, our goal as as a town should be trying to find out, find a way to meet our responsibilities rather than avoid them. And, you know, I think a housing plan could help us do that. I think we need to be more proactive with this and not thinking of ways how to stop forty B. You know, there could be a forty B, there could be a friendly forty B that I would support. So I think what we we need to try to do is just to get control of this narrative. And putting a housing plan together is a great first step in doing that.
I agree.
So could we start with CPC and and try to pull together a a consultant?
Yeah, so I I what I want to do is Amy, Amy from KP Law suggested a few consultants that. Could help us with the production plan, and like Mark said, M A P C could as well, so I want to get a quote. From a consultant to do the plan and then. Apply for a CPC grant to pay for it. That's the next step, I think.
Yeah, exactly.
And in the meantime.
And Mark, by the way.
Once we conduct that assessment and understand kind of where we are regarding the thresholds. The accessory dwelling unit conversations ongoing. And, you know, we're getting a better understanding as to how, you know, those could be incentivized as well. To help provide, you know, affordable housing in town, so.
You know, I'm thinking, Tony, we we almost need a consultant to help us put a scope of work together. The higher consultant, you know, what are the components of this?
That's M A, that's M A P C for sure, that's that's what they do.
And and Amy. Going to point out that Amy Fussell. You know, as Tony said, pointed out different consultants, but they, and. There's a lot of sort of boilerplate stuff, so she said, like, if you look at this towns and this towns, there's a lot of similarities, so. We could get a pretty good head start by leveraging other communities.
Great. All right, so thank you, Tony. Let's move on, we we do have a Super Bowl game to watch at eight o'clock.
I know.
A couple of my nephews are playing in it, so I I I thought it was the one, disappointed I didn't get down, but.
I know.
We'll get to it. Okay, town administrators, right, let's see, update on the. Infrastructure goals. What is this?
Do you want me to, I I can just read the goal and then give a quick. In a response to it.
It's only a few, so that'll be good.
So, you know, we've been going through the town administrative goals over the past few board of selectmen meetings, breaking it up. Into different categories, this is the last category, infrastructure. The first goal under this category is the to meet the requirement of the mass D E P consent order for twenty twenty one. Including breaking ground on the Linway Sewer Force Main Pipe Replacement Project. If you've driven down the Linway, you've noticed that the. Bypass is currently being constructed. We're meeting every two weeks on Thursday mornings with the. With the engineer getting updates as to how it's going and we're moving right along. So things are, things are going well as far as the sewer force main project is concerned. The other big item deadline is actually today. Was the I I, the inflow and infiltration. Plan, so we, Zach, myself, Dan Coughlin. Put together a capital plan based on, you know, the assessment that he had conducted with. CCTVing all of our sewer pipes in town and. It's, that is extremely complicated because, you know, you're looking at where your most. Critical repairs are needed, and you're also looking at your paving plan, national grids, gas work. Any water infrastructure, and you're trying to come up with a capital plan that you. Don't really have any funding for right now. And trying to kind of come up with a schedule and. You know, what we want to do is we want to make sure that, you know, when we, that we've, you know, the gap, National Grid has come in and done their gas work. If there's any water work done, any sewer work done, and then pave and be done with it, we don't want to. We don't want to go in the reverse order and then, you know, have to dig up a freshly paved road. We also have some. You know, intersection upgrades that we're looking at, you know, along with the MBTA and. And their ADA improvement program that they're, you know, as as you have seen on the hot road by Little Mahat. So, you know, a lot of different pieces there that we're trying to kind of layer together. But we came up with a a one to three year plan. Worth one point nine million dollars, we submitted it to DEP today. We'll have a follow up conversation with them, I'm sure, in the next week or two, it's all dependent on funding. And really, what we want to know is how much money will we have left over? From the sewer main job to dedicate towards I I work. And other ma- and other issues, so it's, we're meeting our requirement, but still a lot of work to do. Any questions or comments on that first goal?
Yeah, I mean, I was excited to, you know, to see the bypass going out and. You know, I reviewed the plans, I noticed that they're going in the back of the. The harbor freight or whatever, the junkyard there, that's a great idea, I think. So I'm really encouraged, one other, one question I have on on our pavement management plan, Tony, do we have sidewalks included in that?
We don't, so I have stand, we just signed a contract for Stand Tech in the last couple of weeks. On that audit for the sign audit, and we we expanded it to include sidewalks.
Okay, great, you know. Being in the daycare system business now, I I'm walking, I'm walking inside, it's quite a bit with the carriage. Never, whatever, I have to go out into the street, so.
Well, I know, and and driving down the hot road and seeing that new crosswalk and sidewalk with. Nice, you know, ninety degree granite curving, I'm starting to become obsessed with sidewalks.
Yeah, and just to add, because you just mentioned, you know, if we run a, if we're doing a sidewalk that has the two minutes curve, let's put granite in if we can.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great, what's the next one?
Next is ensure all approved community preservation committee projects are started and hopefully completed with twenty twenty one. This is an ongoing, you know, ongoing thing, we, as you guys know, we had two years worth of CPC projects approved. Many of them have been started or completed, the lowland softball, men and women. Fields, fencing, backstop, benches, all completed. Spring Road Basketball Court completed, looks great. Flash Road Basketball Court is ninety, you know, eight percent complete. In the spring, they'll come back and paint it. And that'll be open, library town hall envelope, the bids, actually, the sub bids are being opened tomorrow. So that's in the procurement process. Little Nahat Playground, we've talked about this a few times, we are. Going to be having a public meeting soon regarding Little Nahat Dune, and so with that, we are going to be talking about the playground as well. The goal here would be to. Put our order in for the playground equipment. You know, that one piece of equipment that we're trying to replace. Now, because we're, I'm sure it's going to be backordered. So we'd like to put that in now in the wintertime, so we have it and we can install it in the spring. Also, I'll probably be going to CPC this year for playground equipment dollars. As well, in line with the open space and recreation committees recommendations based on the survey they did. So, you know, some of the projects, there are additional projects there, like ADA accessibility here in the town hall. You know, where where we are, the projects are ongoing, we're making as much progress as we can. While having a ton of other stuff, but. You know, we're, it's going to take a little bit to get them all done.
On a related note. We should all individually and collectively give some thought to CPC. Applications for this coming year, I understand that the match is because the, there are so many real estate transactions this past year, there. The match is something like close to ninety five percent, which is pretty amazing.
Amazing, yeah. That's great, Tony, I I know I mentioned before to you, you're talking about playgrounds, about the possibility of putting a fence at the library playground. If you, if you can do that, great, if you need to need to put in a article to CPC, I will, however you want to handle that, but. They could use one there.
We have it, we have the, we have the fence in stock, we're just going to do a split rail. Wood fence, it's just DPW hasn't had an opportunity to install it.
Well, maybe in the spring.
Number three is complete pump location at Lowland Site, including pipe under the hot road by August fifteenth. This will require any permits in advance, so this is, this project's on hold, this goal was created prior. To town meeting, my priorities kind of changed through that process with the citizen petition that came through. And our. Our focus right now is on the, on the outfall pipe that, you know, off of Castle Road. It's on the ditch maintenance and improvements, and then the last is the, under the Nahat Road. The pipe under Nahat Road to Short Beach. You know, good news is that even with the heavy rain events that we had and the most rain ever. You know, we didn't have any flooding in the lowlands area for any long term flooding. We had the golf course flood. For the first time, I think I've ever seen. Purely based on rainfall, and we were able to dewater that in less than twenty four hours, so. You know, because of the new pumps and the improved standard operations, operating procedures that Zach has put into place and the prep work. You know, our, the 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 main goal of this is to improve our dewatering ability. And we've done a lot in that regard so far, so.
Rewrite this goals, I think, you know, you're right, Tony, this goal was created prior to town meeting and. In light of the article that passed the town meeting, I think we should. Rewrite this this goal to reflect what happened to Tony.
And we, Zach and I met with mosquito control a couple of weeks ago, we have to put together a letter, a formal request on Town Letterhead. Hope they'll, they'll be coming out this winter to do more dredging in the ditches. And then we're also on Friday, meeting with the stormwater engineer regarding the outfall pipe. On site, so. We're making, we're, we are, you know, we are, we are making progress in a sense.
Great, Tony, good job.
I can attend that meeting on Friday with you, Tony, as we, as we discussed.
Did you see it got moved to one o'clock?
Uh, I didn't notice that, was it at ten o'clock previously? That's okay, I'm free at one also, so.
The engineer asked to move it back. Okay, so number four, provide, provide plan and schedule for short beach resiliency enhancements and apply for construction funding. We have been on calls like every, multiple times in the last few weeks with FEMA on the brick grant. We are having extremely positive reaction from the, from CZM and DEP and FEMA. On the, on the grant application regarding Short Beach Dune. So, right now, we were, we have been working on a benefit cost analysis, which is a part of the grant. We've, you know, we've applied for over a million dollars for construction to basically increase the resiliency of Short Beach Dune by. Bringing the height of the Dune up. And making the. Entry points more resilient, so. We're, you know, we're working on it. We've gotten a lot of positive feedback, this is a big one, so we're putting a lot of effort into it and. You know, one of the biggest issues that we're trying to, the next big issue that we're going to have to overcome is. The garage at the Coast Guard Station and how that's gonna. Be designed and permitted into this project, so.
Tony, I'm I'm hoping during all this that they're going to be making. Some discovery on what type of materials to use to do the testing and look at that real strong. The sand is important.
Yeah, you have to match what's existing on the beach. So like for for Little Mahat, we have funding from FEMA to rebuild the Dune. To what it was prior to the storm. And. That project, you know, they, the engineer applied coastal has already come out, collected samples. And sent it off to a lab to be analyzed for the material that's going to come in needs to match, it's a requirement.
What I just wanted to mention, Tony, that, you know, one of the. Incentives, if you will, for the the short beach. Resiliency plan is how much of. How much land area that helps, in other words, we're not just helping the beach, we're helping. Everything on the other side of the beach, because once the. Everything on the other side of the beach, because once the, obviously, as, as everyone knows, once the waves go over the. The dune there, it all floods down into Spring Road and Foxville Road, Ward Road, so, so I think that's one of our. Rationals for. Uh, funding this is that it protects a lot more than just the beach. It protects that whole neighborhood back there, so.
So true. FEMA is, you know, FEMA is looking at. Not only, you know, what they're typically look at FEMA in mitigation projects or mitigation grants. Is this benefit cost analysis and how, how the project is going to. Improve on repetitive loss properties. Uh, but there's, with this brick grant program, they're trying to also include, you know. Soft infrastructure that has a broader impact to a community. So our project, and I think why we're getting such positive feedback is that it does both. So not only is it going to help prevent flooding in a residential neighborhood that has a lot of, um. Repetitive prop, lost properties, uh, it also, you know, is. Has to do with, um. I'm sharing my screen here. Can you see this picture? So this is March twenty eighteen. This is a picture we're submitting to FEMA. This is our only way in and out of town. So by improving this, by improving the resiliency of that doom. And preventing flood, a flood like this potentially, um, we are, you know. Having a positive impact on anybody that lives in the heart. That could potentially be in need of emergency services during a flood-like event like this. So, um, we're trying to explain to them that, you know, when this area gets flooded. We're cut off from the mainland and so are emergency services and so are anything from the mainland coming in. And so is, you know, our, our services to Little Nahat, so. Um, I think that's why we're getting a lot of positive feedback, because we're kind of like fitting both goals of their project. Uh, all right. Any, any questions on that?
I guess, uh, just that, you know, after you meet with mosquito control or communicate with mosquito. Could, excuse me, mosquito control, you can update us on the ditch drainage schedule?
Yeah, so. The. The, the method that we're taking, using mosquito control for pennies on the dollar. Through their permitting authority with, and their relationship with Army Corps. We only get so much every year. With a, with a five, with like a long-term commitment from them. The way to do this is to start at the bottom and work your way to the top, so, you know. Dig by the golf course and work your way across Flash Road, behind the dump, and eventually to Ward Road. We, last year, you know, kind of, we dug Ward Road out while they were on the course. We have this other section right behind, like this sub, the electrical substation and Ward Road pump station that's. Really, really bad, that needs a lot of work, so we, we're, we met with them to kind of talk about whether they would do that work. Or they would want to, you know, continue to do work like on the seventh hole. Um, or closer to or towards the golf. So, it's a, it's, you know, where they're going to be tar, where their work is going to be targeted is still kind of up in the air. But, you know, you typically will get five hundred feet. Of dredging out of them and we can expand upon that by providing them, you know, DPW resources.
Yeah, we, uh, last year, uh, we were able to expand it quite a bit, uh, what, from their original plan to what we actually got done, so that was. That was nice and hopefully we can have that good fortune this year as well.
Next was recommend other climate change resiliency improvements, um, that's. Kind of on hold, uh, we're going through the updating of our hazard mitigation plan. Uh, so we are working on it, um. Uh, kind of in that, in that, uh, in that fashion, through the mechanism of updating our plan, so.
Hey, Tony, does it, it, probably not, but does DEP have any future plans for. Increasing the dune heights on the causeway?
Uh, that would be a DCR project, but, you know, not that I know of.
No, just in terms of talking about emergency access. In and out of town, you know, a renervement program there with, again, with, with the right materials would certainly be well worth it.
Yeah, they, they definitely took a good hit over by tides in the last storm. Not that I know of, not, I don't know if they're, if they have anything planned. Um, lastly, provide plan and schedule for drainage ditch dredging, so kind of just talked about that. We, um. And I'll, and I'll give you more, once I hear more from mosquito control, I'll provide that to you.
Sounds good.
Seems like you're, you know, you're way ahead on all of these goals and. With everything going on, I know it's been, it's been tough, but you've been doing a great job with them, so thanks again.
Uh, Mark, I said to Josh, uh, the other day, and I'm sure you will agree with me. It's like, no matter how much you get done, you always kind of feel behind. You always feel like there's more to do. But we are, when you, when you sit down and go through these goals, you start thinking, you know, and listing out everything you've accomplished, there is a lot of stuff we are getting done. And we are making a lot of progress, but you know what I mean? It's, there's always more to do.
Yeah, you know, just as you go through this every year and you work into these projects, just take, take a lot of pitches and. Keep a little journal and, you know. Twenty-five years from now, when you retire, you'll, you'll have something to look at, so. You're doing quite, quite a good job, so.
I still do that, I still, you know, from my, uh, summer crew DPW days. I point out, you know, sidewalks or curbs that I helped build.
As long as you didn't have to work with Papa Colly, right?
He was, he was on the landscape crew.
You're not really going to retire in twenty-five years, are you, Tony? A little more than that.
Twenty-five.
Goes by quickly. Okay, is that it with the, um, goals, Tony? Okay, we're going to review these articles. Josh, you want to do that?
I, um, I have to confess, I was feeling pretty. Sick today and, uh, so I didn't get my homework done, so, um, I don't know. Gene and Mark, how you feel or Tony, but, um.
I'd say there's a lot there, it does suggest we put it off to the next meeting. We've covered a lot of the ground.
Yeah, that's all right. I'm open to that.
Then we'll have, uh, Dan and Tony give us the, I have a study update here.
Uh, so Dan, since our, since the last time we spoke, Dan and I have met with. Bob D'Amico, we've, uh, spoken with, um, member, other members of CAC and Masport. And we will be meeting with them tomorrow. Um, Swamp Scott and. Uh, the town administrator, Sean Fitzgerald and their, um, Alice. Which is their CAC liaison for Swamp Scott will be joining us. Um, so we have a, a big meeting tomorrow with them to talk about the concerns that we have with the, with the study. And, um, you know, getting someone from Masport to take part in this meeting was. Um, a big ask and luckily, you know, they're going to be, they're going to be part of the conversation, so. Good outlook, uh, high hopes. And we're, you know, we're, we're rushing it, we're, we've been trying to get this meeting on the calendar because, uh, CAC. You know, is scheduled to take a vote, uh, on the proposal. December, what, what day?
December ninth at four o'clock and the public is welcome to attend that Zoom this meeting.
December ninth at four. We'll put that online, um, so that anybody from the heart that wants to participate in the public meeting on December ninth. That they can do that.
I think it's smart to partner with Swamp Scott on this, on this effort, because, you know, otherwise it's a situation where Swamp could. It's just saying, you know, push it more towards the heart and we're saying push it more towards our Swamp Scott and, uh, I think it's a much. A smart move to collaborate.
You, you can't push it any closer to the heart, you know, since our last meeting. And Dan, you're more aware of this than anybody as a pilot. I've, I've been sitting out there occasionally watching the traffic at night, generally from eight o'clock until probably eleven, eleven thirty. One night in particular, I wanted to bring this in, it was a Friday and it was, uh, the twelfth of, of November. And between eleven and eleven forty-five, there were twenty-eight flights. And, and I was going to ask you, how, can they do that a minute apart from each other?
No, there's a standard, there, there's a standard deviation they need, it's not a minute. It's certainly not, uh, what size are the planes you're looking at? If they were smaller, that's different. The big planes need, I want to say at least three minutes is the standard, but I.
These are probably seven thirty-sevens.
Yeah, those are heavy, so they would need a few minutes in between and. Forty, how many planes you say within, I think it's forty-five minutes?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, that, that's, something doesn't seem right about that. Um, now, they probably can squeeze in some small Cessnas or, or arrows between the big planes, but. That's a lot, that seems like a big number.
But what, what, what got me is every one of them just centered itself over Little Nahat. Just to directly split it in half, right down the middle and then over to Revere and, and, and into whatever runway that is.
Yeah, that would be, uh, two-two left or right, depending on type of plane that's landing, but what's happening is that air traffic is vectoring. Basically just telling in what directions for that pilot to fly to join the final approach force. And it happens to be over the spot you mentioned. But that seems like a lot, that seems like a heavy, heavy load.
It was, uh. It was, uh, it was a lot. In fact, I think Sunday night I saw the same different timeframe, eight to quarter or nine.
You know what they're probably doing, because Logan has parallel runways at two-two left and two-two right. You can literally land two planes at the same time on parallel runways. There are procedures for that. Even the heavies can do that, as long as they're far apart. Um, laterally, so you, you could have been sort of seeing from your purview. Two planes close together, when they're actually going on different runways, right? That happens all the time, especially places like Denver, where they have nothing but parallel runways. And, and, um, places like that, so, uh, you, you might see forty-some planes, but there's a good chance that they're landing on separate runways.
Okay, well, there's definitely something there.
Yeah, I believe it.
Hello? Can I speak? Hello? Is there a right to speak? Yeah. Yeah, um, I want to say something that, uh, Mr. Canty's absolutely right. Um, living over here in Little Nahat, I'm underneath these planes that he's talking about and they, sometimes they are a minute apart. I, I beg to differ with, uh, with, um, I forget his name, they're the lawyer. Um, and it happens almost every night. Um, I'm glad to see that we are meeting with the, um, CAC. I mean, it's absolutely atrocious, the planes that fly over here and they are a minute apart and these aren't small planes, these are jumbo jets. And, um, they start sometimes at four o'clock in the morning. Sometimes they, um, at dusk, they go till twelve o'clock at night. And they are flying over Little Nahat or right on the northern edge of Little Nahat. And I keep calling and, excuse me, reporting this and I get the same patented answer. That the FAA is following the guidelines and these planes are flying a half a mile away from my house, which they aren't. And then a couple of answers saying that, uh, the planes have a right to overfly Little Nahat. I've got this all. Documented in my computer, I can print out the, um, their responses to show anybody that wanted to see them. Um, the complaint line basically is a joke, because they really don't do anything. These planes are flying over my head. I call and talk to the people and they tell me, I don't know how to judge distance. And I'm picking my head and looking straight up and I can see the belly of the airplane, both wings, both blinking red and both the green lights. And these aren't flying five, a half a mile away from my house and they are going sometimes at least. A minute apart, sometimes thirty seconds apart. I'm on the phone complaining about one plane and then there's another plane right behind it. And if you call within a minute of, of, of the first plane making complaint. They won't make a second complaint, they'll roll into one complaint. So it, it, it's, it's, it behooves us to make sure that we don't get these planes flying over the causeway. And, um, you say you're having a meeting tomorrow with, with these people, where is the meeting? Can anybody attend this meeting? Can we watch the meeting? Um, uh, I mean, I think it's great that you're doing what you're doing, Tony, but. W-what about the people that, that are underneath this all the time, that, that affect us all the time? Can we hear this meeting? Can we participate in this meeting and, and give us our input?
George, the, the, I, I can answer that, Tony. The. Masport specifically said that this is a meeting amongst just, just a few individuals. They were not interested in having a public attend.
Okay.
So it's not a public meeting, but we'll certainly hear from, about it from us.
Yeah, okay, now, when you said the, uh, there's another meeting on the, the December ninth. Uh, where is that meeting? Is that a Zoom meeting or?
Yes, it is. It is Zoom public, Zoom and public meeting and, and like Tony said, we'll get information on the website for, for anyone. Including you, George.
Okay, I just want to let you know that how.
So George, we, you know, I, just so you know, um, we got a couple of goals that we're trying to accomplish in this meeting tomorrow. Well, there's one, you got to kind of separate the issues that. You're raising into different categories. You know, there's the, there's the concern about the proposal for twenty-two L. So that's one issue. Um, we have, then there's second issue, which is just as important, is. The amount of planes that fly over in the heart today. Um, next is, uh, the arrivals on fifteen R and thirty-three L. Uh, we have issues with those as well.
Yes, those are the ones that start about four o'clock in the afternoon and go till twelve, one o'clock in the morning.
And then. And, and talking to them about, you know, and again, further talking about the proposal and, you know, what type of study or. You know, changes could be made or, or, you know, voicing our opposition to it. Uh, so, but on, on December nine. That hearing is about the proposal. So, you know, obviously, when you're on there, you know, articulating the fact that. You're aware of, you know, you're, you are against the proposal because. You are already feeling the impact of airplanes that fly over Nahat. And this proposal is only going to increase that. That's a good comment. But they're not, during that hearing, they're not going to be. Interested in discussing really like the current plane path. It's all about the future proposal, so. Be mindful of that and how you make those comments.
I will, I will do that. Now, is there going to be anybody representing the town, uh, at this meeting? As far as, um, Mr. D'Amico, any selectmen going to be there voicing their concerns? Because I'm sure they carry maybe a little more weight than just myself.
Yeah, yep.
And are you going to put this on the, uh, community calendar like the, uh, the ANAV study? That there is a meeting coming up on the ninth, so that people know that?
Yes.
Okay, and one more question while I, I have your attention, because I know you want to get out of there. You had mentioned a Little Nahat playground. Um, I had told a couple of people that I know around here to get in touch with you. Uh, about you talking about getting something together. I want to make sure that they get in touch with you.
Yes.
They did, and you mentioned something about a, um, meeting with Little Nahat, um. Could you send me an email when that meeting is going to be, was, when it's going to happen, so I can, uh, kind of join in?
Absolutely.
Okay, and I, I want to thank you for all the work you have done with this ANAV and, uh, and, um. and hopefully, you know, we can work this out so we, you know, we're not getting bombarded over here in Little Nahat. I'm not the only one. I got neighbors around me that are also complaining, but they don't. Sometimes they, you know, they wouldn't, they wouldn't, I, I don't know how to pronounce this without saying some bad language, so I won't, but um, they wouldn't say blank if they had a mouthful of it, if you know what I'm saying. Um, so I'm, I'm kind of the, a little of the voice around here. And, um, I know sometimes I get excited and I, my voice goes up like I'm yelling. It's, and I'm trying, trying hard not to do that, but you know, I've lived in this town for fifty-seven years, this house for thirty-one years, and I love this town. And if these planes are going to do what, what I think is going to happen, because they're already doing it now, they're, this flight path when they're landing, they're landing over my house, they're going halfway down the causeway over my house and so on and so forth. It might be forced me to move out of this town, which I love so much. I've been in this town just about my whole life. And so this, this is a very big thing to me and a lot of other people in Little Nahat. Unfortunately, you know, it doesn't affect, well, fortunately for people over Big Nahat, it doesn't affect them that much. Um, and that was great to see that we got that many signatures on the, the petition. I hope that that's going to be made aware of when you have this meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And I don't see any issues. Have a very Merry Christmas and please stay safe.
Thanks, George. I just wanted to say, George, that, uh, we certainly, I know you're kind of the, the voice for a lot of Little Nahat, but we certainly understand that it, it really impacts everybody that lives in Little Nahat and as well as.
And, and some people in Big Nahat too. I know that the, these planes that you're talking about, the thirty-three left and twenty-two left, when they fly over Little Nahat, they kind of fly out towards Zeg Rock and then they almost make a U-turn and they hit the people up at forty steps. I think that was what Gene was talking about. And so they do affect the people in Big, Big Nahat too. But not as much as we have, because we have runway four, right? Which, which is brutal. They start at four, four-thirty in the morning. And again, the same thing, you call up and complain and they tell us that, oh no, these planes are three quarters of a mile away from your house and so on and so forth. And they're not. Because I'm, I'm right underneath it and I, and so I'm trying to work with the new noise abatement guy over there, because the other guy is gone now. And see if I can't get them to put a noise monitor in my backyard, because the noise monitor that they have at the Coast Guard station isn't really correctly recording the, the noise level, because it's too far away from where the planes are. So, and the guy said that, and I, I know I had it done before in my backyard many, many, many years ago. And I think the first, the guy's name is Steve, the, I forget remember his last name. But I've been raising that point in my complaints. And I told the guy after the holidays and so on and so forth, go by, I'll get back in touch with him and we can see if we can work out a plan to maybe put this noise monitor in my backyard. Um, and you could see by the decibels that these planes aren't flying where they are supposed to be flying. If you get these planes to fly in the middle of the causeway, it would be perfect. Because they are flying basically the same path, like an arrow, if you had a, a line, they follow the same thing every single time. If you can get them to move that line over the halfway house, a little bit past the halfway house, no one, no one would be bothered, would solve all the problems that multiple head swamps get in the eye. But no one seems to listen to me. It seems like it falls on deaf ears, no matter how much I complain. And it's so frustrating. And that's why I get so worked up, because it's just so frustrating that you're keep, it's like banging the head against the wall and keep doing it and doing it and doing it. And you get no results. So, um, you know, it's, 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 I, I don't know. Sometimes I just lose, lose what I'm trying to say. So that's why.
Don't worry about it. Appreciate it. Appreciate the input, George. And we'll see what we can do.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I'll shut up now.
Thanks, George.
All right, bye now.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to preserving each point. I don't have much to say. I did spend two hours today. There was a hearing at Superior Court in Boston by Judge Kopp. Um, and attorneys from Northeastern and, and Nahat and Preservation Trust were attended. Um, they were going over a couple, you know, a couple of the lawsuits. Um, standing in some of the lawsuits and there were a number of different issues going on. And I think what would be best, Mr. Chairman, um, rather than me trying to explain what went on today, because I'm sure I'll screw it up, uh, is to invite our attorneys to our next meeting to give us a, an update on what's going on and what the schedule happens to be.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I think I listened to most of that hearing as well. And you know, I guess the short story is things are moving forward and seemed mainly the focus of today was sort of sequencing the events in terms of the chapter ninety-seven suit and, and appeal to CONCOM and, and planning board as well as the eminent domain. Uh, more to come on that. I think your idea of having the lawyers explain it. Uh, I'm sure they do a better job than I.
Yeah. I think one of the main things that came out of it, I thought Northeastern was trying to delay any action on the eminent domain until after the Article ninety-seven. Um, I think the judge didn't want any part of that, thought that, you know, the, uh, at least a part of the eminent domain process could continue early on. Um, prior to that, but there were a number of issues going on. So I think it's best to leave it up to the attorneys to explain.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Okay. Town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, today, uh, we sent our budget worksheets out to our department heads to be returned, uh, in three weeks. So we are, you know, officially kickstarting the budget development process. And, you know, before you know it, it'll be New Year's and we will be, you know, starting to look at some, some first drafts of our operating budget. And, um, the finance committee should be meeting soon uh, to start working on that process. As I mentioned earlier, uh, the sewer, sewer main project is underway. Uh, we have a lot more sewer work to be do, to, to be done. Um, whether it be the II related work or pump station related work, um, or other force main related work. We talked about RNAV already. Uh, we've, we're looking at a, a phone upgrade project for the, all the public buildings. Um, we've had a lot of phone lines drop out in the police department or the fire department and the issues here at the town hall. Um, and you know, it's, I think these phones, this phone system has been here for quite some time. So uh, we met with Verizon today to talk about, you know, some upgraded technology uh, that'll help, uh, provide us some resiliency in our phone systems and remote access and, you know, kind of bring up the, bring the town hall up to the twenty-first century. So that's a big project that we're working on too. Um, I talked to you, I told you about the street sign audit and sidewalk audit and that that is underway. Uh, the MBTA sidewalk and crosswalk at Little Nahat is almost complete. I have two other intersections that MBTA want to, want to look at, uh, for improvement. One is the Wharf, uh, Wharf and Willow. The other is Spring in the Hut. I have a couple of plans here in my office that I'd like to show Gene and Josh. Mark, I think you already took a look at them. I'd like to show them to the, to, to you, Gene and, and Josh, uh, so then I can meet, you know, meet with some MBTA and uh, take the next step. You know, where, where they are, you know, they're, they are going through this ADA improvement process anyways. You know, that crosswalk and sidewalk, the permitting, the engineering, the traffic study, completely paid for by MBTA. So where we can take advantage of that product, of their funding, I think we should. And so, but I do want you guys to take a look at those designs. And Short Beach, uh, I've mentioned a little bit about it, the Short Beach Dune over by Little Nahat, the FEMA funded project. Uh, the, a butter's notices should be going out in the next couple, in the next week or so. And a CONCOM hearing um, will, will occur shortly after that with the notice, with the NOI on that. So we're, we're trying to get that project done this winter.
Tony, how about the Airbnb committee?
Airbnb, I completed my, um, interviews. I got to get my appointment letters out and get our first meeting scheduled. I think, uh, Kristen was working on those letters today.
Great, thanks.
Is, is, uh, is Thimcom fully staffed?
No.
How many vacancies?
No. Uh, they are. They're either seven or six, and they should have nine.
Yeah. Oh, that would be.
But those are, that's the moderator.
Yeah, maybe you need to rattle this cage a little bit, because I'm sure that, you know, many hands make lighter work and have a lot of work coming up.
Yeah. That's, that's it. Uh, CPC application processes Josh mentioned earlier is, is, is right around the corner as well with the budget process. So you know, I'm looking at, um, there was, you know, through open space, um, recreation committee survey process, they, they got a lot of comments about uh, upgrading playground equipment. Uh, so I was thinking about applying for playground equipment funding and distribute that in line or in consultation with their committee. I was also looking at the housing production plan. A, an audio assessment for ADA related reasons in the main hall, uh, here at the town hall. And there was another one too, but I, I can't remember off the top of my head. So starting to walk through, work through those as well. Oh, um, cemetery. Um, I'm trying to get quotes from some, uh, stone mason type contractors for an estimate to reset the flat headstones uh, at the cemetery and hoping that that's an eligible project under CPC too.
That's a great idea, Tony. I mean, that's certainly something that we, you know, we couldn't really do DPW. I mean, it's just, you have to get out there and survey it, line it up, and there's a lot of work to do there.
Yeah.
But, I mean.
And while we're there, I think, you know, what I'd like to include in that project is that back circle. Like one quarter of it is cobblestone, like cobble, um.
Yeah.
You know, if we could do the whole circle, uh, like that, because we're constantly having to fix the stone dust and the puddle and, you know, if we could fix that, that'd be good too.
Yeah, that'd be a great spot.
Hey, hey, Tony, if you would, thanks Zach for smoothing out those walkways up at Lodge Park. Appreciate it.
I will, I will.
Thank you.
All right. Um, I'm a, I'm Big Blue football alum.
I know you are.
Last comment is go Big Blue.
Can I ask, um, how are you guys watching that? What channel is that on? I'd like to watch that too.
I think it's on YouTube.
It's on YouTube, but if you, I just, a friend of mine just sent me a text saying, DBSN Boston. Do you have a Comcast? If you have Comcast and you have the voice remote?
No, I have, I have Verizon.
All right. Try it on that too. Try searching CBSN.
CBSN, okay. Thank you very much.
Send me that link, Tony.
I don't have a link. I just, that's what he said. He said, say it into your remote.
DBSN.
DBSN.
We have any citizen forum comments? Anyone have questions?
Nothing in the chat.
Anyone want to unmute themselves and, uh, ask a question on the audio?
John Roberts has his hand raised. Sean, if you could just say, uh, name and address?
Sean Roberts, seventeen Highland Road. Uh, just had a quick question. Um, I, I just joined and, um, forgive me if you guys have already discussed this, but um, I noticed that the bypass has, has started on the Linway. Um, looks like that construction's being done by a company called GVW. Um, I thought the contract was awarded to PGOSO. Um, have they subcontracted that work? Or have they, so they've subcontracted it? So it's not, it, it, and is that against the contract that they have with the town?
No. Nope. So they, they have a, quite a few subcontractors involved in this project.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else? Any questions?
Hi, this is Brennan Baronic from Two Summer Street. Uh, I had a question about the Short Beach, uh, work that was being, that was discussed. Is that is any relationship to the access points to Short Beach or is that strictly focused on the dune restoration?
So the FEMA, the project that I talked about, that's going to be a butter notification in the coming weeks and then a CONCOM meeting. That is not related to access points. That is funding to repair damage that occurred in March of twenty eighteen. The other thing I discussed was the, uh, brick application uh, for grant funding, which does include the access points. Um, so what we're go, we're going through is an application process through FEMA for funding to raise the height of the dune and improve the resiliency of those access points.
So just to be clear, that brick, um, application does both, right? Raises the dune and the access points?
Yes. Uh, some of the access points, you know, doesn't raise them all, like the one on Spring Road. Uh, we've redesigned. We were looking more at like a floodgate type of option there that would essentially shut that entry point down in the winter. Um, and then like I, like I mentioned before, the, the garage at the Coast Guard housing is a little tricky. So how we're going to, you know, design the access points that are right next to the garage and, and, and fit that in with the design. We're, we're not quite there yet, but that one's going to be a little bit tricky. That might, that might also feature some type of floodgate system.
Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Okay. Okay, that'd be it. Thanks. Great meeting. And motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Gene Canty, aye.
I say for mine.
Mark told the lie. Good night, everybody.
Good night.